I bring together the school committee meeting for Monday, June 29th, 2020 to order. Good God, what's the time is it? It's market at 6:34. Our first order of business will be approval of minutes. We have an open session section of minutes from June 8th, 2020, and an executive session meeting, May 18th, 2020.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
By all means.
Is it proper if we have a moment of silence before we kick off for Laurie Melchanda?
I can't think anything better, please. Let's observe a moment of silence for that wonderful woman. Thank you, Mr. Kacoris for that reminder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So our first order of business will be the approval of those minutes. If no one has any problem, I'll take them as a group. Does anyone have a problem with the minutes as they're put forth, either one of them?
Yeah.
Okay, there is one correction.
The executive session, I wasn't in that meeting. I wasn't able to get in the Zoom.
All right, in the executive session, there will be a correction that Mr. Chape was not at that meeting online. So that will be the one change. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's go through our roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
How'd I do? Good?
Good.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kacoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chape?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We're going to go a little out of order. We're going to skip down to 3B is the review and update of the Braintree Public Schools Diversity Equity and Inclusion and Planning. We have Ms. Gonzalez and I believe Mr. Lee will be helping us with that.
Could be.
Hi, is Mr. Lee with you or will you be giving this by our synopsis by yourself?
Yes, I'll be with him, I believe.
Okay. Is Mr. Lee with us?
Um, he's not on yet.
Okay. So what do you say we do this? I know that I want to try and bring them forward as quickly as possible. When Mr. Lee joins us, could someone, is there any way that you could interrupt me if need be to let us know so we can, shall we say, bring that in?
Oh my God.
Sure thing.
And so we will move on to B, which will be communications and accommodations. Dr. Hackett, will you take that away, please?
Grab the door.
Okay, so we have communicational issues. Let me.
I'll be back.
It's okay, one second. Okay, so we're playing it fast and loose this evening, so we're going to move on to B, which will be communications and accommodations. Mr. Hackett, are you prepared?
Thanks for letting me show up.
God love you.
Left out, Mr. Lee is now, there he is, he's on as well, little technical difficulty here. So, all right, let me just pull so much of the agenda.
Do you want to go with 3B with Mr. Lee and Ms. Gonzalez now?
Yeah, that's, we're good to go.
Great, we're shuffling, whoever is directing this is doing an excellent job, thank God, we'll go with the hand signals. Mr. Lee and Ms. Gonzalez, please. Dr. Hackett, do you have the presentation?
I believe it should be on your screen unless I'm not sharing it, hold on. If you could just see the sweat coming down my head right now.
That's what makes these meetings worthwhile.
I just don't know how I get this job. All right, can you see it now?
Yes.
All right.
All right, so first and foremost, for those on the committee who do not know C.C. Gonzalez, C.C. is a guidance counselor at Braintree High School. She is also one of the advisors of the Diversity Council at Braintree High School, and she'll be helping me get through this presentation, and her focus will be on the Diversity Council, but she's well versed in a number of different areas here so that she can jump in wherever she feels that she has some input. So gonna try to cover three items to talk a little bit about. Given the nationwide enthusiasm, passion, and focus on diversity and equity among our country folks, wanted to walk through just a little bit about the work that we have been doing for several years in this area. It is not something that is new to us. This is not to say that we've mastered everything or are in the place that we want to be at this moment, but it is work that we identified several years ago as being critical to the success of our students and our schools. And I just want to give you an overview as some of you are relatively new to the committee in terms of where we've been and then, you know, moving into where we might be going. So that will include a little bit of a conversation around some curriculum and then the Diversity Council. So back in 2017, as I mentioned, we had already identified that diversity, equity, and inclusion was an area that we needed to do a better job with throughout the school system. And in trying to identify the best way to take on this work, we settled on bringing in an objective party who knew more about the experiences of some subgroups than we did to begin to educate us on how should we be looking at this issue, these issues, and what might we want to do to forward our own thinking and to improve our school. So the school system partnered with Dr. Allison Livingstone, who was the consultant with whom we worked. Dr. Hackett, if you could just bring up her bio. Dr. Livingstone currently works at Brandeis University, and as she would joke, her title is a very long one. She is the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Education Training and Development at Brandeis. But she has done this type of work not only at Brandeis, but at Simmons and with several other school systems as well. She came to us very highly recommended, and she has been tremendous to work with in terms of moving our own thinking forward in terms of what we should be doing for students. So that is who Dr. Livingstone is. If we can jump back to the slides. Doctor? Thank you. So again, in November 2017, we first partnered with her. And on December 7th of 2017, she began her work with the district presenting to the entire faculty at our secondary level, which would be both middle school faculties and Braintree High School's faculty. And if you can picture it in your mind, the meeting was held in Braintree High School's auditorium. You know, with all those faculty members, we basically packed the place. And Dr. Livingstone just began an overture, if you will, about the conversation about race and equity and how it impacts student performance in schools, and how we might want to reassess the lens through which we were seeing our students as ours was currently based on our own experiences and not necessarily the experiences of some of our students who sat in the desk in front of us. So it was incredibly well received by faculty. She's an outstanding presenter, very articulate and funny than I am. And so that was one of our first, you know, beginnings of the conversation around these, at times, difficult topics. Shortly after that meeting, later in December, she then met with the Braintree leadership team, which is all the principals and curriculum directors and assistant principals, not only to talk about how the presentation with faculty had gone, but also to begin a conversation with us about how do we facilitate these conversations moving forward? What are the areas that we should be looking at as we decide where to focus our energies? Why it's such a crucially important topic for just hundreds of our students on a daily basis? And how to begin what can be very difficult conversations, not only among one another as members of the leadership team, but with faculty members and families as well. She came back during that summer of 2018 during the administrative workshops that we hold every summer and began to further the conversation by introducing data relative to some racial disparities in our schools and talking about issues such as social identity, privilege, and oppression, and making connections with professional practice. And she began to embed some of these conversations with, again, data that demonstrated that there are subgroups among our student body that were not meeting with the level of success that we would want for them. And the work that we began to discuss was work that would allow them to kind of meet with more success by feeling more welcome and more included in our schools. As we entered the 1819 school year, the strategic plan specifically began to identify cultural proficiency as one of our focus. In November of 2018, we ourselves, you know, jumping off the work that Allison had begun back in August, began to analyze more data about how our students in multiple subgroups were performing in a variety of different areas, from academic performance to level placement to discipline to attendance, looking for areas that we could clearly identify as areas of need that required attention and required a different focus. Later, that school year in January, through the work of C.C. and Justin Wilson at the high school, the entire administrative team was allowed to meet with a panel of students. I believe there were about 15 of them, representing several subgroups within the school. And the whole purpose was to simply hear about what had their experience been as a student in the Braintree Public Schools for the time that they were in school. And, you know, we consciously tried to get as many seniors as we could so that they could be as honest as they wanted to be and say whatever they felt like saying before they walked out the door for the last time. Because we truly wanted to get a better understanding of, for some of our students, what does it feel like to be a Braintree High School student or a South Middle School student or a Hollis Elementary student? And the panel spoke about their own experiences, and there were, again, each, I'm trying to think of a minority subgroup that was not represented, but they all spoke simply about what they themselves went through and how it felt and how and when they felt included and how and when they felt excluded. Some of the things that had been said to them while students in our school system, some of the things that had been done to them while they were within our community. And it was a powerful moment, I think, for the leadership team, who, again, experiences life through their own lens, through their own experiences, and were forced to confront the experiences of kids under their charge, under our charge, and what they received as an education in Braintree Public Schools versus what some other students may have received. So that was in January 2019. Next slide, please. And then, you know, we came off of those meetings and obviously continued the conversation. But in March of 2019, the leadership team began to take a more assertive effort to create, you know, actual strategic steps that we could put in place for the 2019-2020 school year that could have an impact or begin to have an impact on the experiences our students were having in our schools. It's not to say it was a comprehensive list and that all the problems that we could identify would be solved by them, but they were initial steps in trying to move to a direction that allowed our schools to be more welcoming to a broader array of students. And in the presentation, I'll give you one example, Dr. Hackett, if you pull it up. But as he pulls that up, each site created a plan, each department created a plan. We had about 20 some odd of these plans that covered, again, every school and every academic department in the system. This is Mr. Rainey's self-plan, and again, they're really basic steps, but they lead us in the direction we want to go. And so how do we increase cultural awareness? And he talks about hallway displays and emphasizing Black History Month and GSA information all the way down to the bottom where he talks about the desire to be more diverse in our hiring process, which has been a challenge for us over time. But again, each school, each department came up with actionable steps that we could begin to put in place for the 2019-2020 school year with the hope of forwarding this work to better include all of the students within our schools. Jump back to the slides. During the same month, not necessarily related to that leadership work that was being done, Dr. Livingstone came back to the district this time to present the elementary faculty members within the district, all of them. The gap in time, and there was some scheduling snafus that occurred in between, but we wanted to ensure that all of our faculty members had the benefit of listening to Dr. Livingstone and hearing the message that she conveyed and to understand that the points that she felt were the most strong to present to our group. This again was held at Braintree High School. It was almost identical to the presentation that she gave to the high school and middle school staffs about a year and a half before. And so much of it was just to make all of us aware that this is important work, that we all need to be on the same page in terms of addressing and on the same page in making this a district-wide priority that we all have a hand in in terms of improvement. So, you know, in March of 2019, at that point, she had spoken to all of our faculty members throughout the district. You can talk a little bit in a second, and ask C.C. to talk a little bit in a second, about the Diversity Council and some of the work they did in between March 2019 and June 2020. But obviously highlighted by the events across the country and the passion and enthusiasm for these topics that right at this moment provides leverage for movement. In concert with the union, the BEA, the district has created a steering committee to lead the continued diversity and inclusion work for the district. And the steering committee consists of members of the union and members of the administration, as well as a parent representative, with the hope that over the course of the summer and as we get into the fall, what will then be created are diversity and inclusion committees at each school with faculty members, administration, and parents at each school represented on those committees. And that the steering committee would be in a position to kind of ensure that the work being done is coherent and consistent across the district, addressing the topics and getting a flavorful, where effort needs to be expended so that we can do a better job of making sure that all of our students feel welcome and respected in our schools and that the product that they receive in terms of their education is an equitable one for all students within the district. Next slide, please. One part of that in the work that has not only begun, but certainly needs to continue, is work around our own curriculum, you know, efforts to date. A couple of years ago, we sat down and had a long conversation with a company called Facing History, which is a group that looks to ensure that curriculum being delivered to students is more representative, not only of actual history, but also presents the perspectives of several different groups throughout history so that everybody can have a better understanding of where their culture and where their past has actually participated in history and benefited our history and got us to where we are today as a broader global society. You know, some of the work being done specifically in social studies, as an example to be given, is looking at the world history curriculum and making modifications to make it less Eurocentric and studying more topics beyond Europe and the United States in the broader world as a whole, rather than focusing simply on those two areas. Within the United States history curriculum, they've really begun work of taking a look at things such as the paradox between the Declaration of Independence and what is stated in that document and slavery in this country that existed. And also expanding the history and the study of the struggle for civil rights and equal rights for blacks, indigenous, and native populations, people of color, women, people with disabilities in the LGBTQ population. One tangible product of that, if you recall the program of studies that I believe you approved back, you know, it's January this year, the Social Studies Department will offer an elective to students entitled Class, Race, and Gender Issues in the United States, which is a unique course for Braintree High School. It's not something that has been there. And yet, it does begin to move us in a direction that allows for greater focus and greater study of the issues that I think are so important to so many groups within our country at this point in time. So the curriculum work is not limited to social studies, nor is it anywhere close to being finished, but it is an important component of the broader work being done of making our schools more inclusive and more equitable and certainly more respectful of all the students and adults who are present in our schools. So those efforts are really adults talking to adults. You know, Dr. Livingstone coming in and working with our staff, you know, leadership members talking in conference rooms and places such as that are one part of the work that needs to be done. But more than equally important is the work that C.C. and Justin Wilson are doing with students at Braintree High School. And at this point, I'm going to ask C.C. just to kind of talk a little bit about the Diversity Council.
So at this point, well, I'll just back up. We started this Diversity Council with really brought about because there were some racial issues that were happening on social media around kids posting, you know, videos of themselves rapping, using the N-word, so on and so forth. Now, we formalized this group in 2018. However, these issues have been in our high school for a long time. I've been here, going into my 17th year, there's always been this sprinkling of issues throughout when kids maybe have come into whether a guidance counselor, a teacher, or a coach, and maybe talked about some of these issues that they were seeing. But now with social media being so prevalent in our world, I think this is where, you know, it gave us the opportunity to found this Diversity Council. So really what we did, Justin and I, a couple of issues had to come up in the high school. They piggybacked one another, kids were clearly upset, rightfully so. So we were asked to kind of sit with this group of kids that were upset and just really debrief with them what was going on in school and what was going on through the social media posts. And out of that, the Diversity Council became born because not only was it a place for them to discuss what was going on, but they felt like they wanted to affect change in some way. So we formalized this group, and really what we did was, we could probably go to the next slide, is we created this group and tried to come up with some criteria on how we would get kids for this group. We knew that we needed a certain type of student who was going to be comfortable with having these conversations, mature enough to handle the conversations. And we felt it was something that we would ask coaches, club advisors, teachers to put forth names of students to Justin and I. And what we did is really just cross-reference all these lists of students that we've received and tried to find kids who showed up on multiple lists. So out of that, we also wanted to make sure that we had a smattering of students who represented different subgroups in our, in our community, actually, all of the subgroups in our, in our high school community. We wanted to make sure we had everybody represented. So, and that's basically what we have, we have about 18 students that we've had for the past year and a half on our council. We had our first diversity meeting back in December of 2018 where we brought kids together. We meet once a month during the school day. We found it was important because the students that came out of these, you know, these clubs or athletic teams, they were involved in many different things, and we were going to have a hard time getting these students after school. So Dr. Scully had committed to us taking some school time out. Kids meet during the school day once a month, and we do a variety of activities. So our meetings typically incorporated, we always do something educational, some type of activity or an educational issue, whether it's, you know, talking about a race where kids present their own information or we're doing something more formal, where Justin and I usually have an activity planned. We debrief the activity most often times with discussions, and kids are usually, it brings up their own experiences where they share with other students. And honestly, the conversations that happen within that room are pretty unbelievable, to be quite honest. The maturity, the self-education that kids are doing on their own outside of our meetings is really pretty impressive. So we can move on to the next part, so that's why our meetings are kind of what we do. January 2019, as Jim had mentioned, we did this panel presentation, which was a representation of different subcommunities. And to be honest, these kids didn't know one another. Our high school is that large that some of the kids might know each other, but a lot of these students don't know each other. So they come together as a group and discuss these heated issues. And, you know, they did this panel presentation, and the support within, you know, once they presented, the kids were nervous because, of course, they're looking at their former elementary, middle school, and now high school principals, superintendents, and everyone else who was there. It was a little intimidating at first, I think, for them, but they warmed up to it pretty quickly. And the support afterwards was really beyond phenomenal, where kids were hugging one another, congratulating one another, doing such a great job. So I say that is another benefit that came out of this council. The spring of 2019, we get to attend our first diversity conference out at Sutton High School. This was really a phenomenal experience for all of us. This conference was put together by a high school student for her senior project, and which we had a phenomenal.
I think C.C.'s muted.
Checking.
I think she froze, yeah.
Decided because we had come together, we'd done some educational stuff, but we really weren't having, you know, we're kind of coming together as a group and not having the impact we wanted to in the school. So we decided we would create our four subcommittees within the council. So we came up with the four pieces of what you can see on our screen is the community outreach, which our students are hoping that we'll be able to get back into this in the fall by maybe reaching out to maybe the mayor's office or, you know, the police department or any other type of, you know, town or school community, really, to do some presentations. We have a welcoming committee, which is our school decor. While the kids do talk about, you know, feeling a feeling of welcome when they walk in, that also is something that we need to do with activities that we have or we need to incorporate into our school day or school committee. So one of the examples I have here is a wristband distribution, which is something we're going to do. We ordered wristbands that were said, "Be kind, be Braintree, stay positive." We didn't have the opportunity to hand those out. The students and our committee wanted to basically welcome every student one morning coming into school, handing everybody one of those bracelets so that everybody would come together by having these bracelets of being kind, being Braintree, and staying positive. So it was one way, one thing they wanted to do is to welcome students. We have a presentation committee, which they are working on presentations that we hopefully will be able to present to our faculty, whether it's through our faculty, you know, our faculty meetings. They want to present to the students themselves, and they'd also like to do presentations for younger students, you know, elementary school students and the middle school students. So fitting that all in will figure it all out, but they are developing, they're in the midst of developing presentations for all of those. And then we also had a pep rally committee. I'm not sure if everybody had heard that we had our first annual pride pep rally in February of this year, which was phenomenal. So as we have a pep rally in the fall, which is more around the athletics in our school spirit, we had our first annual pride pep rally where we brought together the Diversity Council, the GSA, the school student council was a part of it, and our cultural awareness club. Those four organizations came together, planned this pep rally from start to finish, and honestly, it was phenomenal. We introduced all the clubs as groups, just as we do with our sporting, our athletic teams. They marched out with their signs, kind of like the Olympics, everybody made a sign and marched out. We had a pie in the face, which Mrs. Monahan got to take the pie in the face as one of the lead-ups. We had people perform different types of dance, we did TikToks. And so it was just a great way to bring our school together. Kids didn't have an idea.
C.C., we're losing you a little bit off and on, can't hear you right now. We got you now.
Okay. So that's Diversity Council in a nutshell. So, it's we have a separate rally and then our council. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about the Diversity Council itself or anything else we presented on, but happy to take any questions.
All right. At this point in time, any questions from the school committee, please? Or comments? Do we have any from the school committee or comments?
Through the chair, it's Jen Dolan.
Yes, Ms. Dolan, please.
I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation of this information. It's great to see all the things that have been done. And I'm also happy to see the awareness that there is much more that we need to do. So, I look forward to hearing more about the committee that's been formed and participating in discussions about how else we can, you know, make our schools a more diverse, welcoming, and inclusive place for all students to be. It's absolutely critical. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair?
By all means, Ms. Cobb-Lamere.
Hi, yes, thank you. I want to also say thank you for this presentation. I know that the school has been doing work, but we don't always know that. The parents aren't always aware. So, I think we appreciate having this presentation and keeping us in the loop. And as Jen said, I also agree that we have a long way to go. And I'm looking forward to this. And I'm hoping that we can get people that are involved to be part of steering committees and getting involved and helping out and giving us ideas on how we can make Braintree more diverse and inclusive because that's, you know, we say that a lot, but I don't want it to be a performative thing. I want it to be an actual thing. So, I'm looking forward to what we can come up with together. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb-Lamere. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I believe we have a few people with their hands raised. What I would ask is if you have questions that are case-specific to this, you know, presentation and what we're trying to do. It keeps us on topic. Yes, we have more than a few topics we're trying to get to this evening. And there'll be proper time to comment on other things. I believe, Dr. Hackett, at this time, we will open it up. And I will ask people, we give you around three minutes so that we can, shall we say, expedite this meeting. I believe we're ready for questions. Dr. Hackett, please.
We are, Mr. Chair. Did you want to check to see whether any of the student reps to the school committee had questions?
Oh, I thought they were part of that group. Are there any student reps that have, I'd love to take them now.
You know what, they might, okay, yeah, never mind.
Okay, so I guess I'll take them that, you know, case-specific to this, which was the review and update of the BPS Diversity Equity Inclusion Planning that we've been doing.
Okay, first question would be from Andrew K. Let's see if I can do this. If you could just let me know if you're...
I would ask that that person please come forward, state their name for the record. Is this a Mr. K., I believe?
Yep. Yes, this is Andrew K. I don't have a question. I just want to make a very quick comment. I'm not sure if you are aware or not. You guys had the wrong link for the meeting. I think...
Yes, I've been putting that out there. I've had, if anyone's watched me, I'm kind of going to the right because I've got several people that have, shall we say, texted me. And I've tried to get them the right information. Our apologies with that.
So, I just want to comment a little bit further on this. This was, you know, you guys have a lot, you know, dozens of young people who are in the high school and recent graduates who are attending this topic for the first time because it's very important for them. You know, I just want to put this out there, a couple of things. One, the agenda for this meeting was not posted until this morning. You guys need to be posting these things 48 hours, not including the weekend, before these meetings. Now, on top of that, having both the wrong link on the site as well as the scanned copy of the notice. And, you know, and I think a lot of people are very upset. And for their first meeting, it's created distrust in that all the members of the council somehow had the wrong link, had the correct link, and everyone else did not. I think you guys need to think about rescheduling this portion of the presentation so that people have an opportunity to hear this in full and comment in full on it. I know that it's recorded, but, you know, people that are seeing the recording of it may not have a chance to ask questions.
Okay, if I may. I agree with what you're saying. I don't think this is the only time we're going to have this type of a conversation. I hope that this is something that we're going to, we're going to mark as we go forward and hit certain milestones. So, I'm hoping, you know, that this is the type of, shall we say, program that is seen on multiple times on our website. And my apologies if we did not have the right numbers. I mean, I did have, I believe I had, one of the reporters asked us for it. My wholehearted apology for that. I will make sure that we get agendas out quicker. We did have an agenda, but we didn't exactly have it out with the right heading on it. And there were a few glitches on that. You have my apology, but you also have my word that we will make that better.
Mr. Devon, if I could?
Yes, please.
I would just say that I appreciate the question. And we do apologize for the link issue, confusion. Not quite sure what happened with that. Obviously, it was not intentional. I will also say that we always post 48 hours prior to the meeting. The meeting was posted through Town Hall, and it was posted to our website. So, but to your point, you know, tonight is an introduction to Mr. Devon's point. It's the beginning of this conversation. And we welcome and certainly want fuller participation. This is really nice. We've never had a meeting with 98 participants before. So, it's good to know that there are people within the community, to Ms. Lamere's point, that are looking to help us do this work.
Okay, thank you. Who was our next participant? Dr. Hackett?
Lauren K.
Okay, can you please state your name?
Hi, my name's Lauren K. I graduated in 2016. First is about your response to racist social media posts. You talked about how you formed a group of people who were upset about the posts. But my main concern is with the kids who made the posts. I know when I was in high school, there were several racist tweets sent out, and nothing happened to the kids who tweeted that, nothing more than a slap on the wrist. And while it's great that you're educating the kids who do care about social justice, I'm wondering what's happening to the ones who are being blatantly racist online. And my second question is, I'm wondering what's happening with students who dress up in Native American costumes, headdresses, face paint, running around doing chants. That happened when I was in school. And it was completely fine by the administration's perspective. So, I'm wondering how that's changed since 2016.
Okay. Dr. Hackett, or do you want me to take this?
Well, I mean, I would just say I appreciate you calling in and giving that information. And all I can say is that administration works very hard to deal with issues when they happen. And as they happen, every situation is different. There are certain things that we can control and certain things that we can't control. It's not certainly for a lack of trying. Our policies aren't very clear about what happens when students cross the line and unfortunately do those kinds of things. We also know that, you know, we've got to hopefully continue to create environments where students are willing to step up and let us know because oftentimes, unfortunately, some of what gets said and gets done are in places that we don't have direct observation of. So, I would just say, you know, and I do appreciate, you know, I appreciate the question, appreciate the comment. Tonight's presentation and tonight's meeting is really trying to break the committee and also the public up to date on what we've done. And I think we've already, certainly, we know and understand that we have been up to do. We're committed to the work. You know, it's difficult to go back and remember everything that's happened over the last five or six years in terms of student experiences. We would certainly want to know so we can learn and grow. But, you know, the intention tonight really for us is to, is hearing the stories. We're just hoping people will be willing to partner with us in doing what's very difficult.
All right, thank you. Who was out there, the last person, I believe? Doctor?
We have a few more. Emma Rutan, I believe.
Okay. Please state your name and your commentary or question.
Hi, my name is Emma Rutan. I am a 2017 grad. I'm here with my mother. I just wanted to address LGBTQ rights and representation in the school. I acknowledge that there was a diversity pep rally that occurred. I was not there, but having talked to current students, I can say that I know that the GSA was booed when they tried to walk through the pep rally. I also know that there is a page going around called BuyPOC@Braintree that anyone on Instagram can follow. And it's just been horrifying to see all these people anonymously coming forward saying that Braintree is an unwelcoming place for students who do not follow heteronormative norms. And so, I understand that the school committee is working hard. However, I don't think wristbands and making vague promises is going to make people feel more safe. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate your comment. It's heartbreaking to hear that some of our students would choose to act in that way.
I'm so nervous. I didn't know I was going to tell...
We can still hear you. We were nervous still. God love you. You spoke very eloquently to a subject matter that's heartbreaking when you hear people that have to have these types of experiences. I can only say that we'll do the best we can, shall we say, to educate those people because obviously, it's a lack of education or empathy. Dr. Hackett, any comment to this?
No, I think you covered it. Well, you know, we certainly are working to improve. But I just believe I unmuted Rob Kearns.
Okay, so, excuse me, who's next?
Hi, Rob Kearns, resident of Braintree, class of 2015. I'd just like to echo the comments previously spoken. Number one, I am very, very disappointed that the link was changed. It seems kind of like a bait and switch. I don't know if that was intentional.
No, sir.
But it seems like it's a violation of open meeting law to change the Zoom link that was on the agenda. So, I'm very upset about that, number one. Just like to echo the comments about the wristband and echo the comments of member Cobb-Lamere, that I think we don't want to be performative about this. And I think it's, I'm glad that we're starting to have the conversation about these issues in town. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments and your questions. I'm very disappointed to hear that our links were not up and operative to an operable way for all that want to participate. Like I said before, my wholehearted apology. We'll make sure that does not happen again. With that being said, thank you very much for your willingness to participate and let us know how you feel. That's how we change. Thank you. Doctor, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, you know, the link was somehow incorrect. I would just hope that people would understand. It's certainly not intentional. If we didn't want to talk about this topic, we certainly wouldn't call a meeting, have a conversation in public. I mean, we're here to learn. We're hoping that other people join us. And, you know, I think one of the most important things we can think about, and we think about is the school system, is that, you know, we are not, we're not necessarily or really the solution by ourselves, that this is a community issue. And there's a lot of work to do within the community. We are certainly a major part of that. And, you know, our job is to really hope that we can educate people, educate ourselves. But we're hopeful also that, you know, the larger community will continue to join us and that this becomes a community conversation, not just a conversation within the school department. You know, there is institutional racism in all, in all parts of our society, in all institutions, from, you know, from hospitals to employers. So, it is certainly, we are not alone. And again, you know, we are opening this conversation. This is a first step. The real question, the real hope is that you all who are passionate about this and want to be a part of it will still be here moving forward to help us in this work because we certainly don't have all the answers.
Thank you, doctor. Are there any more people?
I have a question.
Excuse me, just state your name, please.
Vani Mauricio.
Yes, hi.
Hi. Okay, so, I actually, I love that there's more people on this panel. I was in the meeting earlier and there wasn't that many former students or parents. So, I'm glad that there's more people on this panel. And Tom, I actually have something for you. Looking at you, you look a little frustrated with everything that everyone's saying. So, I want to ask you this. Do you have kids that go to school in Braintree?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
You do. Are your kids, but are your kids white?
Yes.
Okay, so if your kid came home crying every day and wondering why she wasn't being treated fairly and she was a good student, tell me, would you be on here looking as frustrated as you did, or would you want change?
Well, first of all, I'm frustrated in hearing the terrible stories. And my two children, my two children did come home crying. And there were issues with my children socially, with school and things such as that. It's one of the reasons why I sit here. So, when I hear stories of people that are not, well, that are having the same experiences I have, it's not frustration. It's, I remember what that was like, the frustration to sit up at home saying, "What can I do to help my child?"
Okay.
So, it's not, I'm not frustrated with the speakers. I'm disappointed that we could do more.
Okay, but I did send an email to you and seven and six other members in the school committee asking you guys for change in the schools, telling you guys the things that my child was going through. And no one answered us. So, the people that are on the committee who are on right now, I want to ask you this. What was your reason for taking this job? And if you're not going to care about the students, step down. Step down. Because these kids deserve more than that. And I've heard and I've read those things on Instagram. And you know what? In 2020, these kids should not be going through that. We should not have graduates from 2017 coming here and saying these issues. We shouldn't. We shouldn't. And you never responded to my email. And many others in the school committee didn't either.
I was under the impression that you met with our superintendent and our assistant superintendent. I was under the impression, you heard about what our Diversity Council that was formed a few years ago. So, it's not reactionary so much as what we were, shall we say, ahead of the curve and going that way. I can understand your frustration. I thought you met with people that gave you the answers you wanted.
I did meet with them, but they didn't give me the right answers. And first off, starting off with the use of headmastering your schools, and that's what I addressed to you and the committee. It's offensive. It's offensive for me as an adult. And I can see why it's offensive to our students. So, what is the hesitation in changing that title?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, George DeCourse.
Yeah, and thank you for joining us. I know you were on the earlier meeting as well. You'll, if you follow how we work, and I hope you appreciate what we do, we take these matters very seriously.[1682.22] we take these matters very seriously. We, we read your email. And if you'll follow the rest of the meeting, you'll see what we're gonna do to address it and address some of the, we've had many concerns come to us. We care about them all. We're all, many of us are graduates of Braintree. We also had all our children go through. So you will see that we're gonna, we're gonna have a discussion about how we're gonna address each one of those things. That's how these types of groups work. So I hope you understand that. We do this all in public. And that's how we'd like to address the issues that many people have brought forward to us.
And we do have- Thank you, Mr. Kukors. Uh, Mr. Hackett?
Yeah, with the forehands, um, Alyssa Noble.
Please come forward and state your name and, uh, comment or question, please.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Noble. I am a graduate of Braintree Public Schools 2004, and I also have children who are in Braintree Public Schools for the first time this year. I would first ask Mr. Hackett to post the slides on the school committee website now so that those of us who were unable to get into the meeting because of the lack of transparency can look at them as we continue with the rest of this meeting. The second thing that I'd like to say is, um, I'm sorry, the previous speaker, I didn't catch your name. I think you said a different name than what was displayed on the screen. But it seems like, Mr. Devon, you were pretty dismissive of her concerns. And as the only, uh, I assume, black woman who has spoken in this meeting so far, uh, I think that that speaks directly to many of the issues that the people who have chosen to join this meeting are trying to address with you and the rest of the committee.
Yes.
I also have heard over and over again in your res, in all of your responses, Mr. Hackett and Mr. Devon, to each of the previous speakers, a lot of, we know that we have work to do, we are not perfect. And I would ask that you do not allow your current imperfections that will always exist to get in the way or be an excuse for moving forward in this work. I think that you guys are all coming into this with good intentions. But I would ask, what concrete steps are being considered by the school committee and by the administration of Braintree Public Schools currently in moving forward for either implicit bias training for staff, for addressing the culture that, Mr. Devon, I know you said you were saddened by the booing of the GSA students in the pep rally. But ultimately, the adults are responsible for creating the culture of the schools that we send our children to. And I'm not just talking about parents, though we have a very significant role. The adults in the school building have responsibility for creating that culture. The fact that students believed that that was allowed and they were given a pass on that as a whole community only further reinforced those messages to the students. And I'm asking you, what complete solutions are you guys offering right now going, what are you considering?
So you heard the presentation tonight and I will post it, um, on the website again.
I did not see it because I couldn't get it.
Yet, so if you could just give me a chance to finish my statement. Uh, I will post it. I can't do three things at the same time. I'll post it as soon as this meeting is over. Presentation itself is, we have concluded, we have other business to move on to. But part of this presentation was a first step in describing the different specters that we're gonna set up among staff. Because obviously, to your point, uh, there's, there are steps left to do. Uh, we have started that work years ago. We continue the work. We're broadening the work. And, um, as we work through the summer, as we continue to bring those groups together, they will come up with specific strategies and actions that will tie into our strategic plans. So, uh, that's, that's the process that's gonna happen. The school committee will be taking, uh, that discussion over the next several months. And then we come back in school and we have students and staff back in place, uh, we will begin that work as well. So, Mr. Chair, I would just, um, not, not, but we do have a full agenda. We really do need to have a discussion about school opening.
Yes, we do.
Back to this topic again, next, next, at your next meeting. So just to, um, be mindful of the time, I know you're aware of it.
Yes, um, to those that have spoken to this and some that wanted to speak, I believe we're going to have, um, a public comment later on. We, like I said, we, like the good doctor said, we have quite a few things we're trying to get through. I appreciate your engagement. I appreciate, I appreciate the tough questions we're being asked. And those tough questions are the answers that will make us better. If anyone thought that I was, shall we say, not taking what they had to say seriously, perhaps they don't know me. In that, every single person that has a, a story where their child did, um, did not have the optimal experience at school, I know what that's like. And it, I'm not frustrated by hearing the questions. I'm frustrated because I remember what that feels like, the helplessness. So my phone number's on the website. If you'd like to call me, I will, and it's 24/7, you call me, I'll answer. Thank you. We're gonna move on now to communications and accommodations. Uh, Dr. Hackett, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so, um, four, getting my bearings back here again. Communications accommodation, we have, uh, this packet that was previously distributed. We do have a, our project 351 ambassador from East Middle School this year. Uh, her name is Annika Tekandadi, and, uh, we just wanted to recognize her for her good work. She's an excellent student. More importantly, she's a caring, kind person with a heart for service. So despite the fact that we were closed the school, she, um, took on the challenge just the same. She, uh, did work over the course of the spring, uh, including several fundraisers for families and students and nonprofits in need. So just wanted to recognize, um, recognize her. You also, in your packet, have a listing of the, uh, high school 2020 scholarship recipients. So you can see there's quite a long list. As you know, this year, uh, this, the ceremony was actually done virtually, which is, um, you know, one more thing that we were not able to do in person, which is unfortunate. But, uh, you know, we, uh, continue to do the best we can to make sure students are getting the recognition that they deserve. They were recognized at a public, uh, in a ceremony online. You can find that on our website along with all the other, uh, events for the class of 2020. You also have the profile for the class of 2020, including, um, where students, where they rank, uh, where they're planning to go to school. And it actually goes back to, uh, 1955, where we had a 4% college attendance rate of 21.1%. Um, and as you know, um, we have, um, now, uh, we exceed, um, we'll see that into the mid to high seventies for four-year college and continuing education, uh, we reached 88% this year. So, um, for your information, uh, we have a good range of colleges and universities that our students are going to, as we always do. And many, you teach the high school and the guidance department. You also have, uh, the, an update from the South Shore Educational Collaborative. Uh, this is a, uh, this is a monthly update. We are, we're past the end, getting near the end of this year. The collaborative still looks to be in good standing. I think they're actually very well positioned. Depending on how the budget goes and, uh, what has to happen, um, they are prepared, as we all are, to, uh, make adjustments if we need to. And finally, you have the, uh, the bulletin from the, the York Parent Organization Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Um, as you know, that is a, it's a regular bulletin that comes out, uh, a monthly bulletin. And, uh, just passing that along, it does have some good information in it about, uh, some Title IX regulations um, and additionally, some reopening, uh, information that we're, um, in the middle of. So that is, uh, concludes my, uh, the communication for me. I don't know whether there are some from the committee.
Wow. Um, doctor, that didn't come through very clear.
Oh, like the whole thing?
Kind of, well, kind of garbled. The, um, we're, uh, toward the end, the MASC bulletin, I think that was-
Yep, so the MASC bulletin is, is a monthly bulletin. Uh, you do have it in your packet. There's some good information on Title IX changes as well as, uh, information on, uh, the opening of school.
Okay. Um, all right, so I guess we're moving on to see gifts, gift approvals.
You have, you have two gift approvals, approvals that are on the screen right now, if anyone wants to take them.
Yes, please. Uh, like, like we do with gifts to schools, I will, uh, entertain a motion to accept in a second and we'll roll call vote at the end. The following gifts to schools have been donated to support the mission and vision of the Braintree Public Schools. Morris Elementary School, gift to schools totaling $3,672.53. Uh, one check in the amount of $3,672.53 from the Morrison PTO to be used for a new sound system for the Morrison School. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion of a second. Our second is Braintree High School, gift to schools totaling $1,100. We have one check in the amount of $1,000 from the, uh, Roman Ronancia Memorial Fund, Paul McGovern, in parentheses, to be used for the purchase of a neutral soccer uniforms for the fall season. Another check totaling $100 from the Yosef and Linda Schurk in memory of Dick Carson, to be used by the BHS Athletic Department. Being a person that was coached by both, uh, uh, Mr. Schurk and Mr. Carson. That's wonderful to hear. I'll, a motion to accept in a second?
So moved.
A motion and a second? Okay, we'll go through the roll call vote, um, to, uh, accept those gifts. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye, sorry.
No worries. Ms. Cobb Lemire?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kukors?
Aye.
Mr. Chave?
Aye.
And the chair votes ayes. First of all, thank you very much for your donations, uh, to our public schools. It's gratefully appreciated. Moving on to, from the superintendent and staff, a review of the June 25th DC Fall Reopening Guidance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, please let me know if you can hear me. I don't know why I'm having some audio issues. So tonight, just really wanted to give you an overview of a conversation that we've been having at the committee level and, uh, subcommittee level, but certainly administratively, about our reopening process for next year. And, and as you know, um, there are a lot of moving parts right now. The Department of Education is doing the best they can to keep up with, uh, the amount of changes happening on our, on a, almost a daily, if not certainly weekly basis. Certainly, we know, and we just think back three or four weeks ago, uh, what it looked like then versus, um, you know, where we are now. And, um, while Massachusetts is doing, taking an excellent job flattening the curve, as they say, and bringing numbers down, there are other, uh, states in the country that are, are seeing some serious spikes. So, um, I just wanted to take you through first the actual draft guide that came out, uh, last Thursday. It was, uh, well over 30 pages long. Uh, there was some consistent, um, consistency with the initial guidance that had been released a couple of weeks ago. But there are also some significant changes, and I, and I just wanted to take a few minutes to bring you through, uh, what this document is saying. And again, this is being described as initial, uh, guidance and, um, that we will be seeing, uh, updated version in, in mid-July. So, number one, the approach that, um, the department is, is encouraging or wanting people to understand and think about is that there is no one strategy or mitigation strategy for, uh, dealing with, uh, COVID in terms of, um, infection, in terms of, uh, spreading, uh, spreading the disease. And, and it really is a combination of strategies from cleaning to masks, um, to social distancing, all of which you can see are the points that are made below. Uh, one of the things that was new was that the, uh, guidance is, is saying that we're actually requiring masks for all adults and students in grades two through 12. Uh, and, uh, recommending or encouraging masks for students and, uh, staff below, uh, well, just students below grade two. So that is new. Um, I do think that there is a, uh, a lot of conversation that's gonna continue to happen around this. The guidance may change, but that is where we are at this current time. Uh, the physical distancing, which was six feet not too long ago, has now been changed to recommending that six feet is optimal, and that's what we should be shooting for. But three feet is, uh, minimal, uh, minimum in terms of the distance between students. So that is a significant change, and, and I do think that, I do know that that's getting quite a bit of discussion, and we'll see where that recommendation goes. They are asking us to, uh, to go through our classrooms and to take some typical classrooms and socially, just thinking about three feet, um, minimum, and laying classrooms out to get a sense for how many students we would actually be able to put in it, put in a classroom safely. Uh, we have a pretty good idea what that looks like. Clearly, that does increase the number of students that we would be able to put into a classroom. Because it, 1.10 was the number that we were hearing. So, again, the, the point of number four, additional guidance is coming out in mid-July. We do have to submit three plans to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in August, and I will talk about what those plans involve in a slide a little bit later on. Not gonna spend a lot of time on this. This is the, um, guidance that we've all seen, and it continues to be seen. It does make a few points about, um, some research that is starting to emerge around, uh, COVID spread. You know, but again, mask, face coverings, physical distancing, hand washing, and certainly staying home when sick are the major four points that, um, that the department and the Department of Public Health is, is emphasizing. There are some, they have cited, the department has cited some recent literature that's come out, uh, in, in making some of the changes and the recommendations that we just talked about. Uh, again, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, but there is a lot of information that is starting to emerge from both within the United States and abroad, um, to, uh, really try to guide, uh, everybody in school systems with some actual experience as to how we safely reopen our schools for students and for our community. And this final slide from the Department of Education really just, from my perspective, shows the number of balls that are up in the air and the really significant, uh, items that remain, uh, to be flushed out and provided, and for us to be provided guidance on, which certainly makes planning challenging. Uh, you know, I do think that, as we have done already, there are some assumptions that we can make. I, I think, you know, some common sense assumptions that we can make. We certainly have good guidance on right now around facilities and cleaning that we, uh, have already had discussions around at the beginning of the planning process. But there are some, there are some major areas here that really haven't even been discussed, including transportation, which, um, obviously is problematic because we do kind of have to figure out how we're gonna get kids to school. Uh, and athletics and extracurricular activities and electives, uh, also really, um, is, is a big question mark. And I, I'm, I'm thinking that likely the, the department is waiting to see how the numbers trend before they start to issue some of the guidance on, on those topics. So, uh, moving on to the three plans that we have to submit. Essentially, we have to submit a plan that has, uh, all students in person with the new safety requirements in place. So, again, masks, minimum three-foot physical distance. That would be all students in our buildings, all staff in our buildings in the fall, or, or at some point when we would be able to transition to that. And that is one of the plans that we would have to submit. Then, on the other end of the continuum, uh, is the plan that we'd be to submit for full-blown remote learning, meaning that no students are in our buildings, no, no staff are in our buildings, and that we are full remote. So we, um, and then in the middle, of course, is that we have to provide, uh, a plan on, um, on hybrid learning. And, and that is some kind of combination of, um, uh, being in school and out of school. There, there's been some discussion about some kind of rotation, uh, between, you know, one week on, one week off, splitting students in half. There's been other discussions and other models that we can look at. The department will be providing further guidance on that. And we will continue to do our work on that to figure out what works the best for us. I think the department is trying to provide, um, some additional, um, flexibility on that, recognizing that, um, not all places, not all communities are gonna be the same, and local conditions are gonna vary. There may be some school communities that open the year and are able to do in-person learning with the requirements. And there may be some that, uh, will have to stay entirely with remote learning. So we will continue to be updated by the department and work through our plans. So what I really wanted to, after that kind of update, just provide you with a draft of how we're thinking about the planning process. Uh, there's clearly an awful lot of work to do with not a whole lot of information in a very short period of time. And I, you know, would just say that, you know, transportation is a, a very good example. It takes us weeks to put together our transportation routes. We've already made the change and, and we are prepared for bringing our fifth grade students from Ross, Flaherty, Hollis, uh, and Morrison to East Middle School next year. We, we calculated our routes based on that adjustment. Uh, if we have to make additional adjustments and we don't know what they are until mid-July, we are gonna be, um, we're gonna be scrambling, to be, to be candid. So, uh, we, you know, the more that we can get going now, and the more that we can get answered now and planned for now, uh, the better off we will be. So the thought is that, and, and I've talked about this at the last meeting, we would have an overarching planning committee, kind of like a steering committee, um, of a group that will meet on a regular basis. But this group isn't really the working group. This is the group that will really be coordinating the work being done by, what I will show you is, is actually working teams, um, to make sure that, uh, the, the work that's being done in the working teams is coming together, is cohesive, it, it fits together. And also to make sure that we are involving people at a high level. For example, the, uh, the town health department and the building inspection department, public safety. Um, and then we're also involving parents in, in this step as well. You know, these numbers are placeholders. This is how we've thought about it. We do get a little nervous about making this big group too big. Uh, and also recognize that there are gonna be opportunities at the, at the building, uh, at the work team level for other participation. But again, this is how we're thinking about it right now. Uh, I won't read down through every one of these for you. I think they are relatively self-explanatory. And then for the four working teams, we see essentially four buckets, four- And then for the four working teams, we see essentially four buckets, four categories, major, major overarching groupings of work that needs to be done. Health and safety, facilities and operations, teaching and learning, and special education and student support services. From a structural standpoint, kind of hierarchy view of this, and how information flows and how decisions get made, there are certain elements of this that depending on what we're talking about, will need to definitely receive. School can be approved by, just by statute. For example, if we were to make any kind of changes to the school calendar, if we were to make any kind of significant changes to programming, those would be actual votes by the school committee and approval by the school committee. But the point of this is to make sure that we're keeping everybody in the process and everybody in loop and communicating widely on, on our thinking and getting feedback on that. So underneath the school committee would be obviously the central administration, my office. The school committee also has two subcommittees, Finance and Operations, and Education and Policy. The planning team is just under that, as you can see. And then you can see the four working groups that will be fleshed out in terms of responsibilities and membership over the coming couple of weeks. That those four groups would report directly back to the planning committee. And then to the far left-hand side, you know, our obligation, our job, and we have to, it's critical that we make sure that we continue to involve and always involve our directors and our principals and our assistant principals on the leadership team, whether they're in the formal planning process of any of these groups or not. The center of this for us is equity and access. I mean, I think we, you know, we certainly did demonstrate that initial closure. We were very concerned about making sure that our students who were in need of devices had devices. We passed out well over 700 devices. We were really concerned to make sure that those families and students who did not have access to internet had cellular access to internet. We provided mobile devices for them to connect. Well over 50 of those went out. And then we focused on and have, I think, have done a tremendous job with our food services department, Sarah Coughlin, of just serving literally thousands of breakfasts and lunches to our students and their families. And, you know, so for us, all of these four buckets, we have to make sure that we are looking through the lens of equity and access so that all students are and their families are able to participate in wherever we, wherever we end up landing in terms of the reopening model. And then this slide just kind of begins to flesh out some of the, of the tasks, the topics that each one of these working groups will need to take up. And they are in no particular order, and it's not an exhaustive list. What is obvious, you know, and striking is the fact that many of these tasks overlap with, within the working team. So there are certainly things in health and safety that are going to touch on facilities and operations and vice versa. They are all interconnected in some way, and that is the, really the work of the overarching, our overarching planning team to make sure that they are bringing that information together and, and planning in a cohesive way. So we're not duplicating efforts or we're not leaving anything out. And on the right-hand side, another consideration is there are just an awful lot of considerations. I mean, from the standpoint of how the department guides us on what attendance, student attendance will look like, you know, right now it's 180 student days and it's 990 hours. At the high school level, you know, the commissioner has been talking about having to have some flexibility with that. We have labor agreements with all of our staff and personnel that we will need to keep an eye on and potentially negotiate. We have been in regular weekly contact with the head of the BEA, our Teachers Association. They have been already a major part of the planning process, and they will continue to be partners with us as we work through this. And then scheduling models, social emotional wellness, family supports, space configurations, busing, you can kind of read down through the lists. And then there is the reality, reality of budget and fiscal constraints that, you know, we do have, we do have limited resources or we have, we have a cap. We certainly have been fortunate to go into next year. But we also know the state is considering additional cuts as they grapple with the budget gap that they are dealing with. So, you know, where we are right now in our budget and what was approved, we could be in a different place depending on what happens at the state level. And, you know, in working with, with the town, with, with the mayor, you know, we've had a, you know, through the entire budget process, have worked very closely and appreciate the mayor's support, and also recognize that we are, we are a significant department within the town. And if, if finances change, then we are going to need to be at the table certainly, and try to help work through that as a department of the town. So those are really kind of the major buckets and the, you know, the categories. As we are thinking about them and some of the topics, there clearly will be more. We certainly have likely missed any, some, and you know, that's, that's where we are with the planning right now. So our hope is that we can come out of this evening's meeting with at least the blessing of the school committee as to moving forward with, with putting together the overarching planning team. We really would like to try to get that well in place by Wednesday or Thursday of this week so that we can begin the work of establishing the working teams and can go into next week after, after the holiday, really on, with our feet on the ground and ready to go. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
At this time, are there any comments or questions from the school committee?
I do. This is Carla.
By all means, Ms. Saros.
Hi, this is Carla Saros. Thank you for all your work. I appreciate it. So June 25th, the DCE update came out. When are you going to let the parents know whether they can choose going to school or doing virtual classes? And further, if a family decides, oh, we want to go virtual, we're too afraid to go to school, but then jobs change, life changes, are they allowed to switch going from virtual back to school? Because now we got to worry about transportation and so I don't know, even know if you've even gotten that far.
No, I mean, you know, there's going to be a lot of questions that we're not going to have thought of. That happens to be one that we have and have thought of. Part of that will depend on how state views attendance, what's the ability that they're going to allow. You know, the, the signaling from them is that they are going to allow maximum flexibility. We recognize that we're going to have a population of students and a population of staff who are not going to want to come back in the fall. You know, staff, a bit of a different issue. There's, there's a process for that in terms of just, you know, family medical leave or other leave forms of leave, or potentially depending on who to back or where we are in the process, including our staff or the whole remote learning part of it. Learning going into the fall next year is, you know, going to be like this year, what we did this year. It's obviously unexpected. We are in a different place going into next year. In a hybrid model, it will work much better, obviously, because they're seeing but our goal is to have maximum flexibility. You know, some of it's going to depend on the department's guidance. And definitely, if if they want to be out in remote and then go back in or vice versa, we just have to be able to be nimble enough to accommodate for that. This is, this is difficult for everybody. You know, there are going to be times where we're going to be challenged to, to meet the needs, but that is our goal. So we have that in mind as we're planning. How do we, that's flexible, that's fluid, and allows that kind of movement in and out of remote and in-person learning.
Okay.
Any other comments and questions from the school committee?
Yes, I have one.
By all means, Ms. Dolan.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett and Mr. Lee, for all the work that you've put into this one. There are so many vagaries clearly still in play. I have a few things, Dr. Hackett, I'm hoping you can speak to that we actually covered in the Policy and Education Subcommittee prior to this that I want to make sure people hear about. So one was the fact that I had commented that I was hopeful we could have more parents involved in this planning committee. And as you've already stated in this meeting, it does seem like the downstream committees can have more parent representation, but I would, I guess, like to reiterate that I'm hopeful we could have at least five to six parent representatives. And now that I'm looking at this, I didn't make this comment in our last meeting, but I think we can and should have more teacher representation as well. To your point about the committee becoming unwieldy, I certainly understand that, but I think it's important to not put the burden of representation on just, you know, one person from elementary, one person from middle, just in case people aren't able to attend. And the other thing I'm hoping you can mention that gets to Carla's point that she just made is the survey that's going to be conducted for both parents and families and for staff, and how you guys plan to do those a couple of times to account for changing circumstances. And the final topic I'm hoping you can speak to is the fact that initially we were told or heard that DCE would be giving prescriptive information to us in terms of how this was all going to work. And now it sounds like they might be rolling back off of that, and it's going to be the burden of the districts to determine how to roll out, what school is going to look like in the fall. So if you could just mention something about that, too, I would appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. I'll take your last question first. So you're right, in, as we shared, the department was signaling that about 85 to 90% of the new guidance that was going to be coming out was not going to be guidance, it was going to be directive. And that was the initial information we had back in so long ago, like two weeks ago. There was a lot of feedback that came from the field, in quote, and the department has, and it has done a good job listening. They are working through this as best they can as well. And I believe that, you know, we're in a place now where there's going to, there are going to be certain things that the department is going to say that we have to do, but they also recognize that local conditions, as I mentioned before, change totally. I mean, from just thinking about Boston as an example, a school system of 60,000 students and 100 they have, to school systems that are in Western Mass where the commute to school for some, some students is almost as close to an hour. And you know, everyone has different capacities. Everyone's experienced the virus in different ways. And I think the department has recognized that, and they have, they are going to allow for more flexibility. Again, just to the point, there are certain decisions that are in statute that they will need to address from, you know, time on learning to numbers, number of student days. And in kind of blessing the whole remote learning piece of this, because if, if you remember, it wasn't too long ago that we felt pretty good about our Blizzard Bag program, and all of a sudden we were hearing the department say they weren't going to allow it anymore. So they've done a lot of reflecting, and I believe that we will see some really relatively good flexibility for us moving forward. The answer to your first question is certainly, of course, we can, we can certainly consider additional membership on the committee. I'm hopeful that we get at least what we have here. It is obviously the best time to plan for an opening is when everyone's gone. So the challenge of knowing who is going to be available and who's going to be willing to do the work is in front of us. And you know, we certainly can look at that again. You know, I do think that having more community representation is, is a, is a good thing. And I do also want to stress that we really would like to be able to get out, not only just with the survey that I'm going to have Mr. Lee talk about, but along the course of the summer, I think it's important for us, if we can, to put out some of our initial thinking and really try to get some feedback from, from students and from parents and staff, because you know, they need to be part of the process in a bigger sense. And, you know, this is going to be incredibly challenging for, for all of us. So it's important that we hear their voices and that they may or may not agree with everything that we do, but hopefully they're not surprised by it. So maybe Mr. Lee can speak to the survey.
Well, certainly. And part of all of this planning involves information. And the more information that we have, the better plans that we can make. Certainly guidance from the state is critical in that endeavor. But also the intention of staff members and families is equally important. And we need to develop a sense of under certain circumstances, who would be comfortable returning to the schools in the fall? And as the summer develops, different information will become available, more clarity will be provided. And over time, we can increase the level of information we can give those stakeholders so that they can reconsider and think through whether or not they're going to be comfortable by the time we get to the school opening. So the intent would be to survey families and staff members multiple times over the course of the summer with the intent of trying to get an understanding of who would be returning to the schools in the fall, both from a staffing perspective and from a student perspective, which can help guide our planning and allow us to make the best situations possible when the schools open. And as Dr. Hackett explained, on an ongoing basis, provide them with new information as it becomes available so that they can refine their own thinking and give better feedback to us as the summer progresses. So even though the, the numbers might be a little off and askew when we first survey in the next week or so, it'll give us some broad understanding of where people's minds might be at this point in time. And as we are able to provide better information to them, they can give us better responses in terms of their intent for the fall. And we can narrow in on the best solutions as we go through the course of the summer.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, any other comments or questions? To this plan? By all means, Ms. Lemare, Akav Lemare, please.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, thank you to Dr. Hackett and Mr. Lee for putting together this planning, initial planning. I think that everybody, administrators, parents, teachers, students, all have concerns. I've read the DCE report. I've also read the Massachusetts Teachers Association's response to the DCE report, or guidelines, rather. I know there's a lot of concerns and, you know, some of the things that they say, you know, they mentioned feasibility studies a lot. And I think that, you know, if this stuff is not feasible, I, I think that we need to push back on that and that we need to maybe outline and put together a group of resolutions of our concerns that, you know, that would, that, and that could be part of the planning committee. They can put together something and we could document that as, you know, concerns that we have and make a resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Akav Lemare. Any other comments or questions from the school committee?
Actually, this is Jen Dolan. My bad, I forgot one of my questions.
No worries at all.
Thank you. I also saw in the course of the presentation that we are awaiting guidelines for students who receive special services. And I know that that is a concern, both, you know, through the remote learning that we were thrust into unexpectedly in the spring, but also how that would look in the fall. And so I can see that it's on the, the list for things that we're expecting more information on, but I was wondering, Dr. Hackett, if there's anything you could share around what we may have heard about how that population may experience returning to school.
Well, yeah, so just, you know, there has been, there really has been nothing official about the actual fall opening. It is without question a major concern of every school system, every school committee and every superintendent and administrator and teacher in the Commonwealth. And I know that the department is, has keen interest in trying to help us figure out how to make sure that our students who are in special programs and are receiving services, there's been some suggestions and conversations about whether or not students in those programs actually, regardless of the model that we go into, that they would go full-time and not go into a hybrid environment. Clearly, that's going to depend on the virus, and it's going to depend on a number of other factors. And we do a pretty good job here in really being inclusive with our programs. Creates a lot of questions and concerns. And there's also just the whole level of, some of our, some of our students are very intense. And from the services we provide, for example, just very close physical contact with toileting or other medical issues that we are dealing with to help them access their learning and supporting. There's a lot of questions about how do we do that in a way that is safe for everybody? So we'll continue to look, you guys, department on that. It's certainly a priority for us. This has not been an easy situation for any of our students, but certainly for our families and children who have special needs in our specialized population. It's been very difficult in its, in cases, it's been, you know, kind of heartbreaking that we've just not been able to provide what we know that they deserve and need. But, you know, we've done the best we can, and we're hoping to receive some better guidance from the department. It'd be nice if some of that came in the way of funding.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Any other comments, questions?
I'm just going to be really quickly. This is Carla again.
No worries. No worries.
So, social, emotional, like recognizing that there's going to be a severe impact on these children coming back to school. This definitely, I don't know, I didn't see the, I know it wasn't exhaustive, but the lips, if we have that in there, definitely needs to be talked about, discussed. The parents need to be involved because this is, kids are scared to go to school and we can't let that happen.
There's, yeah, and there's no question, you know, part of it, when I think about equity and access, is related to that, that we've got to make sure that we are taking care of the social, emotional needs of our kids, but also of our staff.
Yeah.
In this graphic, under Special Education Student Support Services, you can see social, emotional supports in there.
Okay.
But we recognize that is cross-cutting, you know, across teaching and learning and certainly health and safety. We have done a lot of work around social, emotional learning, we've done quite a bit of work around trauma learning form, programming and instruction. You know, that will be a really major part of the discussions, both in the Special Education and Student Support Services Working Group, but also in the Teaching and Learning Group as well. So I appreciate the point. We are, we definitely have students that we're concerned about and some of them we haven't seen for a while. So, you know, we're going to have to think about the opening of school and what are those first three, four, two or three weeks look like? And, you know, it's not going to be business as usual, we're going to have to spend some time really working to figure out what their needs are, how they're doing, where are they, what's been their, you know, what's the regression looked like? And how do we, how do we try to mitigate all of that and reentering our kids? I appreciate the question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saros. Any other questions from the school committee? Thank you for your pointed comments and your questions. It helps us move forward on this. This is a committee that's going to have to, shall we say, hit the ground running and not know how far away the goal line is. It's going to be interesting to see how we progress. Moving on from the school committee.
Mr. Chair?
By all means, Mr. Kokoros.
I think we need to do a motion to approve this committee, correct?
Yes, I believe so. My apologies, yes. I will take a motion and a second to approve this.
I will make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor, I saw, are you back with us?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Akav Lamare?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kokoros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This panel is approved by unanimous vote. Moving on from the school committee. A, we, the Braintree School Committee, recognize the two petitions that are circulating around town concerning the BHS mascot and the seriousness of the subject. This subject will be handled by our Policy and Education Subcommittee as per past practices in this type of a concern. Moving on from that, we'll go to B, which is consideration of approval of the state COVID-19 funding. I believe, Mr. Kokoros, you have that?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we had the first reading of this resolution at the last meeting and we'd like to move it forward this evening for vote of the committee so that we can get this in the hands of our legislators before the session closes to identify the need for funding for the mandates that we're going to need to go back to school and deal with COVID-19.
So that, that almost, I don't think it's same-night action, but with that being said, does anyone have a problem with us moving this forward this evening from the school Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve this.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Akav Lamare?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kokoros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, this is to move forward. Moving on, we have a report from our Policy and Education Subcommittee chaired by Ms. Dolan. Ms. Dolan, take it away, please.
Thank you. So the first item on the agenda under the Policy and Education Subcommittee is the first reading of our reaffirmation of commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. So obviously, we've talked quite a bit about this this evening as just the start of an extended conversation about this topic and the actions that we intend to take. So one of the first things we'd like to do as a supplement to the actions that we intend to take is take a look at this resolution to reaffirm our commitment. We are not looking for any same-night action on this, as this is something we'd like the committee to have the opportunity to review and provide any feedback on. So, Dr. Hackett, is there anything you'd like to add on this topic?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. No, to your point, you know, this is a, this is a step, it's an important step for us to make sure that our families of color and our indigenous and black families understand that we are committed to this, that we are committed to making sure that we expand the instruction of our regional oppression and that we do a better job and continue to move forward providing professional development, not just for faculty, but for ourselves. You know, we've talked about potentially having some opportunity to provide professional development for the school committee. And, you know, again, this is just an affirmation so that we can certainly send the message that we believe in people, we want to be better and we're committed to the work. So again, this is just be a first reading and part of a discussion at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
So the takeaway there is, please take a look and be prepared to come with questions or feedback at our next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan.
In terms of the, sure, you're welcome. In terms of the remaining policies, there are two, I'm sorry, I need to get myself back to the agenda. There are three that I would like to see if we are ready to take a vote on, and those are Policy AB, the people in their school district, Policy AD, mission statement, and Policy ADC, tobacco products on school premises prohibited. We discussed each of these for their first reading at our last meeting. And I would like to omit Policy AE, commitment to accomplishment, that was inadvertently included on the list. So I believe we need to take these policies one at a time, is that right, Mr. Chair?
Well, at this point, what we can do, like we do to expedite the vote, if this, everyone's read these, if anyone has any, shall we say, comments or changes, we would have to take a roll call vote on that one, or we can do them all as a group. But what I would ask, if no one has a problem, that we take individual motions in seconds to be able to, shall we say, differentiate between them. So at this time, as you look at AB, people in their school district, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. When we look at AD, mission statement, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. On number three, ADC, tobacco products on school premises prohibited, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
At this point, we will take a roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, thank you, sir. Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Akav Lamare?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kokoros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The policy has been enacted. Okay, where are we now? So you said policy, commitment to accomplishment will be dealt with at a later date?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on these things, Ms. Dolan. Greatly appreciated some of the work that you've had to put in. I listened in to the meeting before and was impressed, appreciate your time. Okay, what are we looking at now? We are looking at, please excuse me, oh yeah, our public comment. How many people do we have with their raised hands, doctor, that are physically, we're able to do? We have seven, five hands, like everything else?
Five, one to eight, so.
Okay, well, let's remember that public comment has to be kind of short and sweet and as always respectful. We appreciate your input. We would ask that the people that come forward, state your name and either, you know, make your comment or your question and we'll go from there. We'll handle as many as we possibly can, depending upon the hour, we'll go from there. I believe the first person is up. Dr. Hackett?
Some of these are a little cryptic, so I will unmute someone and then let them introduce themselves.
Great. Our first person, please state your name.
Ashar is the only one name.
Okay. Your comment, your question, please?
They haven't unmuted yet, so.
Okay, so they haven't been unmuted yet?
They haven't unmuted themselves, yes.
Okay, well, maybe they're hearing it. I've made the same mistake.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name.
Okay. No, my name is Mashar, I graduated last year. Um, so first of all, when I come to Braintree, you guys are very reactive to this. So in terms of like diversity club or whatever it is, that was only ever started after students had come to you and talked about like racism, that was happening in and out of the schools. The club was actually formulated, prompted, yeah, it's playing going back, so I don't know if it can, but it's going to go. But the club was actually prompted and started due to racial issues off, out of school. So basically, students were saying the N-word blatantly and without any remorse. When I was brought into the school, the school didn't really do anything about it. The school basically covered it up, said, we're going to handle this, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. And at the end of the day, nothing really ended up happening to the students. The students didn't get in trouble, they went about their days. I guess the students had a hockey tournament, so they couldn't do anything to that student. But my issue and my focus right now is, I feel like when it comes to, you guys wanted to create clubs or disbands, it's only ever after something happens. It takes last men dying and getting murdered, that's tough, start thinking about these issues. And, you know, you can say you talk about it, but it doesn't happen. I don't see it happen to, but it's probably against diversity that would be, this is my junior year, and it was diversity and pride and we showed it, how we're all the same and, you know, like, I don't see color. No, that's not how we should, that's not the message, it's just that we don't see color, because it's the kids of color that are being targeted, that are being attacked. So in terms of that, I feel like Braintree has a lot of work to do that comes to inclusivity amongst the students, because the students are very, very, very segregated, whether it's by clique, whether it's by social, they're very segregated and that's a big issue with the school. I was the body president of the school, and I'm not trying to say that holds any ground, but I was both to those positions and I was very uncomfortable, my entire experience in Braintree, from when I moved there in seventh grade to when I graduated. I was constantly being bullied, I was constantly being thrown racial slurs, whether it was parade or on school grounds, I was being targeted day in and day out by white students who didn't enjoy my presence or didn't want to recognize who I was. So constantly day in and day out, I experienced a lot of racial discrimination. So I think that's the big issue. If the person who represents your school or even for representing a body who experiences some features, I mean, I know I'm rambling right now, but it's a lot that the school needs to do, it's really a lot to do and disband is part of the solution.
Okay, can I ask you a question? May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Well, because, there's a little bit of a disruption, but your tone and inflection's coming through.
Wait, hold up, because I can get you down, one moment, one sec, because I see you making faces, I'll put a hold on to them.
Okay.
If I'm outside of mid-journey, it's like.
At some point in time, I'd like to talk to you, if you would go on our website, my cell phone number is there, please give me a call, because I'd rather have a longer conversation with you offline, because I'd like to hear, you know, your evaluations. Obviously, we get your evaluations, but I'd also like to talk about, you know, what your potential corrections would like to be.
I don't have, I really don't have the time, you keep coming, kind of getting out of the Kelly heat.
Okay.
I don't really have the time to be calling and texting, because I, in my youth at Braintree, that was who I was. I called upon you guys to represent the minorities in the school. And I feel like even when I did that, I didn't get the necessary support that I was supposed to get. I don't understand, I'm not even trying to make this about me, because at the end of the day, it isn't, it's about the future of Braintree.
Yes.
But I don't understand how the person who came to you about a situation that happened off the school and who, which responded with creating clubs and committees to support these situations from not having, happening again, wasn't in the club that was created.
Okay, yes.
And aside from that, it's, it's deeper than, because clearly, you can preach all these things to the student school grounds, but they're still the same things, when they see each other, they see each other all the time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Unfortunately, we can't hear this young gentleman and we would like to.
Well, we've heard, we've got his name, we'll try and reach out, because the connection between him and his phone was rather rough, but I'll tell you what, like I said, his tone and inflection and his message is kind of coming through. I'll do what I can to try and reach out. Can we go on to the next person? And let me reiterate to people, you get three minutes and we go from there, please. Next person, please come, state your name.
I'm going to go to someone who hasn't spoken yet, Erin Bryant?
By all means.
Erin, you are unmuted. Whoops.
Hello, can you hear me?
You can.
Yes, we can, thank you.
Um, I would like to yield my time to Aiden Dougherty, who has a prepared speech that we are here to make, so if you could pass the mic to him and unmute him, please.
Okay. Do we have the capabilities of doing that, doctor? We're looking for a Mr. Dougherty? Does he have that designation on his phone?
I'm working on it, hold on.
Okay. I don't mind a speech as long as it's close to three minutes, you know, we're not just cutting people off, I don't think that's polite, we're asking to please, so in order to try and keep this forward. Mr. Dougherty, you there?
Yes, sir, hello, can you hear?
Hi.
Hello, so I'm going to be speaking for more than three minutes, I know you had said to keep it under, but I'm sure there's many people on this call that would happily cede their time to me and instead of going through the pain and the process of me waiting three minutes and then getting seated, we'll just run through the entire speech in its entirety.
Okay, we're with you.
So first off, I'd first off like to acknowledge the fact that we were on the agenda earlier and there was not even a single opportunity for either Ms. Kay herself or anyone else on this call to make any kind of statement prior. I was a little frustrated with that, we were put on the agenda and then we had a short statement read off, which wasn't the kind of engagement we thought we'd get, we didn't think we'd be putting everyone else with public forum. But regardless, we're here and we're happy to make the statement, so I'm going to begin now.
Please.
Oh, my name is Aiden, I'm with a group of Braintree alumni, students and community members who want to see our mascot changed. I'm going to be reading a prepared statement which will be shared afterwards. First off, I'm grateful to be here and I'm grateful for the opportunity, opportunity to share why the community needs to move past its current mascot. I first want to say that we're coming from a place of growth. One line that we've spent a lot of time considering is normalize changing your opinion when presented with new information. To Braintree, the WOMP is supposed to symbolize pride, resilience and community, whether it's sports teams or... Whether it's sports teams or murals, the WOMP head feels like a central figure in our collective upbringing. Say the phrase "WOMP pride" to any alum, and a rush of nostalgia washes over them. So the very idea of removing the WOMP often gets received as a shock to your identity. We understand that. It's okay. I feel the same. Being a WOMP means something to a lot of people. But was, what is it about those four letters and that design that makes us feel that way? Does their headdress remind you of pride? Is it something about words that start with the letter W that make you feel like a community gets stronger? No, it's obviously not. What brings us together are those first days of school at Morrison or Flaherty or Highlands. It's BYB games at East Middle School Gymnasium and its varsity matches and graduation ceremonies on Memorial Field. The WOMP was never a central figure in our collective upbringing. It was just along for the ride. I used to think that the WOMP was a pillar of my childhood, but I'm starting to realize it's nothing more than just ornamental. Once we realize that, it makes it a whole lot easier to rate what are the intentions behind their actions and what are the impacts of it. Not only does the American Psychological Association say that mascots like ours cause a detriment to their respective communities, but the very people we think we're honoring have time and time again asked us to stop. It's time we move forward, and it's time to change our mascot away from the WOMP. We, as a town, claim to be honoring Chief Wompertuck by using his name as our mascot. If we truly want to honor Chief Wompertuck, we must listen to local and national indigenous communities. Far East Gray, the chief of the Wompertuck tribe and descendant of Chief Wompert, the chief of the Massachusetts tribe and descendant of Chief Wompertuck, has been speaking out against the WOMP's mascot for years. In an interview, Wicked Local Gray said, "We are not mascots, we are not trophies. We are a living, breathing people that's still here." He goes on to explain that in their culture, shortening a name is actually seen as disrespectful and that the Massachusetts tribe does not find the mascot honorable. The NCAA, the National Congress of American Indians, has directly called for an end to all mascots using Native American history and names, explaining, "These caricatures and stereotypes are harmful, perpetuate negative stereotypes of America's first peoples, and contribute to a disregard for the personhood of native peoples." Research on mascots like ours show that they give Native American students a limited sense of self by minimizing their cultural identity to a headdress and a couple chants. By using the WOMP, we are ultimately complicit in a nationwide suppression of those students' understanding of who they are and who they can grow up to be. Instead of the WOMP mascot, the Massachusetts tribe has asked for their ancestors to be honored through education of indigenous history and modern issues, engaging in frequent communication and conversations with the tribe, and of course, caring for our planet. In addition to these indigenous groups, the American Psychological Association, American Sociological Association, the National Advancement for the Advancement of Colored People, National Education Association, the National Collegiate Athletic Association, and even the United States Commission on Civil Rights have all amplified native voices, speaking out against the use of mascots featuring native imagery like ours. From the time we were in elementary school, we're taught about the golden rule, treat yourself how you would like to be treated. Scott, we're going against the direct requests of native communities, including Chief Wompertuck's descendants. We have been breaking the golden rule that we've been taught to live off of for generations. This change is timely. In the wake of the largest civil rights movement in history, communities across the country are reflecting on the harm they've caused black and indigenous people of color and asking themselves, "How can we do better?" In Massachusetts, it's clear that we must start with the removal of Native American mascots. As noted in a recent Boston Globe article, Braintree is among a number of communities that have truly mobilized to retire Native American mascots, including North Quincy, Millis, Tewksbury, Winchester, and the Neshoba Valley. And these movements are working. While their mascot may not be a Native American, the Walpole School Committee recently voted unanimously to change their mascot, the Rebel, to speak better at origins. The issue has even been taken to the state level. There is a bill currently going through the Massachusetts Senate which will ideally prohibit the use of Native American mascots in public schools in the Commonwealth. A similar bill was just approved and made last year. Braintree, the world has its eyes on us. How do we want to be remembered? As the people who stepped up and made this change because indigenous groups in our area have been calling for it because it's the right thing to do? Or people who clung so closely to stolen culture that the state had to be forced to let us, had to force us to let it go? Although Braintree High School has used the WOMP as its mascot for decades, this symbol creates anti-indigenous rhetoric and causes harmful consequences on both native and non-native populations. Organizations and individuals have already spoken out in distaste of the Native American figures and culture being used as mascots, yet continuously ignored by the general public. This issue is timely as current bills in Massachusetts towns are fighting for this inevitable change. While many town residents and alumni are emotionally connected to that perceived identity of what it is to be a WOMP, Native Americans are unable to strip this identity in the systemic harm they suffer as a result. In the future, we ask that the school committee take the following actions in order to meet the demands of Braintree residents and students. One, that the committee will host an in-depth listening forum regarding the mascot change petition. I know there's a lot of people on this call today. There's a whole lot more throughout the town of Braintree that would love to be on this. And given complications around how this meeting was handled, I think it would be best for everyone that we have a second meeting in which we do in-depth listening. The committee members shall schedule individual meetings with representatives from A Better Braintree for further discussion upon this issue. Then, before the start of the next school year, the committee will vote on whether or not the Braintree High School mascot will be removed and replaced with an alternative. I think it's important that the next school year starts knowing who they are and what their identity is, and it shouldn't be a WOMP. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to working with you on this issue in the future and seeing this conversation to a fair and equitable conclusion. I should, the chair and Dr. Hackett, to give the, Marisol Cortez to speak next.
Hold on, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Dougherty, for your statement. Would you please send a copy of that to our central office so that we can, you know, put it forth to proper, to other people that would like to have a copy of it? Do you have a problem with that?
No, of course. I'm not sure if you replied to the email that we had sent this entire committee prior, but we have your email addresses, and we'll be sure to send along this script.
Excellent. Sounds good. Okay, I think we, we have to get to some other people with their hands raised that haven't talked before, and we do have a bit of a time crunch. So the previous people, you know, that whole three-minute thing, we, my apologies, but I have to be somewhere as far as picking up a daughter. But can we please have a few more people with their hand raised that have not talked before? Doctor?
So I just, unmuted, I believe.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I was reached out to by A Better Braintree to represent kind of an indigenous voice. I'm biracial, but my dad comes from the Ketchua tribe. I'm not technically First Nations, but I am part of the indigenous community. And I just have a couple of things to say. First off, thank you, Aiden, for that speech. It was really good. I just want to know, like, tell you guys about my experience and, you know, working with a huge nonprofit in New York City called the American Indian Community House. It's one of the biggest in New York, and I've gotten really into it since college. I just want to say that being, the mascot has to go permanently. I don't think that there could be any ultimatum for it because, you know, how, I think that students, you know, there might be assemblies with Native American people, assemblies trying to educate people, but it's not going to completely work unless we get rid of the mascot entirely. You might, someone even say, like, you can't teach someone who chooses to be ignorant. So there is a risk that students might not even want to sit down and have these discussions because it might make them, they're like, at least a little bit uncomfortable. So why not just do both? And I'm sorry if that makes people a teeny bit uncomfortable to have those uncomfortable discussions about racism, but imagine what communities are feeling when they're seeing people doing brownface and chanting down the hall, which is what I experienced first coming in here. And I was honestly really confused, and I just don't understand how a town can grasp the concept that everyone else in the outside world seems to grasp. You know what I mean? I think that what we're trying to do for students is prepare them for the outside world and prepare them to be around people that are, come from different backgrounds and ethnic groups and whatnot. But we're not doing that if we're just going to keep this mindset. That doesn't seem really to be open. And I think having this mascot kind of gives the notion that numbers of indigenous people are dwindling, which is completely false because it's a culture that's growing. And, you know, the native population to you or to a majority of people might just fall under statistics. So like, there's only 3% of this and 3% of that. When, the population's actually growing. There's a numerous amount of Native American people in New York City. There's a numerous amount of indigenous people in Massachusetts itself. And you look at Wisconsin, Texas, the numbers are growing. It's just that there's no representation. So how are you going to know that those numbers are growing if there's little to no representation? And on top of that, you have ridiculousness going on. It's diabolical. It honestly is. It's atrocious. So I'm really hoping, and I really want to be surprised that this will change. And it's, I honestly have to say that I won't be surprised if it doesn't, but I just really hope that you guys can really come around and just see how this affects people and see how it's going to help the community learn, and it's going to help open their minds, and it's going to prepare students who might have not had the influences, the positive influences of racial justice. It's going to open them up to see differently, and it's going to prepare them to be more likable when they're being hired. It's going to prepare them more for life. But that's all I have to say, and I'm wishing you the best. And I really hope that you guys can.
Thank you for your free time.
Yeah, I really hope that you guys can give more people of color a platform and improve these meetings. I hope there will be more. So thank you.
Appreciate your comments and others who've, who've helped us with their information. Can we take one more? Because I'll tell you what, we're running, we're bumping into a time crunch, but I don't want to be seen as not, shall we say, letting everyone speak. This is by far the biggest public comment we've had in years, but it's greatly appreciated. We have time for one more person, doctor, that has not spoken before.
Okay, I'm going to unmute Tommy McCardle.
Mr. McCardle, please state your name for the record.
Hello there. My name, my name is Tommy McCardle. I'm a class of 2015 graduate. I would just like to use my time to reiterate everything the last two people that spoke said. Mascots outdated, it should have changed, it should have changed five years ago, should have changed 10 years ago. We should change it now. Thank you. Have a good night.
Mr. McCardle, thank you for your comment, and those of other people. At this time, I will take a motion. Oh, by the way, we will be talking more about this. This isn't one of those one-night situations. So please know that there'll be other times and other forums to comment. This is the tip of the iceberg, so to speak. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
This is Kelly. Can I just say something real quick? I want to thank everyone's comments. I know it's been a long night. I just want to acknowledge everybody that took the time to come here and to make a comment. We appreciate your comments. And as Chairman Devin said, this will be a continuing educational thing that we will continue to have listening sessions and be available for people to be able to say what's on their mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb-Lemare. I have a motion. I need a second for the adjournment.
Second.
I have a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe? And the chair votes aye. We are now adjourned. Thank you, people. Greatly appreciated.